We're going to start the meeting at seven o'clock. Do the pledge. Let the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Father, the Lord, stands one nation, unredone in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Do we roll call? Dan Van Buren?
Yeah.
Ben Hub?
Yeah.
Jeff Corpenney?
Yeah.
Okay, we got guest speaker.
Angela.
I'll let you go ahead.
We don't have none of the papers. Where they at? Oh, I'm sorry.
She's not on there though. Well, I'm here representing Licking Township Fire Company. We actually do have contract with you, so I'm actually telling you, we're having a chili cook-off on April 12th, and I'm just here to promote that. If you guys were willing to put up some flyers and if Ben could put some down to National Trails Committee, that would be great. It's going to be April 12th at noon to four, and we'll have trophies. It's $10 for contestant fee and $5 to get in, and the proceeds go to half the donations we go to the, we have a Licking Township Firefighters Association, and with that money we usually flowers for funerals. We also have a college fund that we usually donate every year, so we're just trying to be, you know, proactive in the community and kind of bring it back to a community, because I don't think we've ever had an event like this before. I know about three years ago, we had a pancake breakfast at the Jackson Town United Methodist Church, so I'm trying to make this an annual event. I'm kind of putting it on, so I'm just here to see if you guys will be able to hand out flyers. We do have a Facebook event that we had put on also. On the Beacon, there's been some information out to the Beacon and advertisements with T-100. It's going to be held at the Jackson Town United Methodist Church in the Outreach Center at 12 to 4:00. And also, if you guys are wanting to come, bring your grandchildren or children, there's also the, church will be having an Easter egg hunt earlier that morning, I believe, at 10 o'clock, so.
What was the day of that?
April 12th. It's a Saturday. And then the other half of the proceeds will go to the Jackson Town United Methodist Church Food Pantry, that they have an awesome community thing going on there. They have all the, tons of donations. I know the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts have donated there before, so that's one thing I'd like to talk about. The other thing is to the trustees, I think all of you, I know Don was around, we've adopted a road on Honda Hills, and this year we're kind of, we're going to opt out during the, what is it called, the? Yeah, Pac-33, just for this year, for the springtime. For the Earth Day, we're actually going to help Licking Township out this year, but we are wanting to come in the fall and do a pickup on our road that we've, that we have adopted, if that would be okay with you guys.
Yeah, we'll come in the best one.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any questions that you guys have?
Do you have flyers related to?
Yeah, I have flyers. These can be left here, and then you could take these to your department. That would be great. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, you're welcome. Actually, on there, there's a website, Licking Township, licking dot TWP, ohio.us, and you can get information, rules, and entry form, so thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Correspondents.
I got information about the salt contract. I was just talking to Ben a little bit about it. We need to make a decision by April 8th on whether we want to purchase the salt at the state bid price again this year.
I think we only got, what, two loads last year?
I don't know if we got.
There's a bunch still on there.
If you guys don't think we need it, almost let them know.
That's always seen like what we got in hand.
Maybe you wanted to schedule for at least one load maybe from next year, because we don't have to take it till.
Do we have paper stores? We don't take it?
Do you have copies of that, or can I see what it says? Maybe give us the deadlines on delivery and that kind of stuff.
This is the only copy I brought with me.
I think we didn't take it till fall.
Last year?
Yeah. It was pretty late when we got salt, wasn't it, John?
It was late in the summer, but you were getting at least two loads.
No, I don't think we did that much.
What's the contract date there that we have to?
Probably don't have to.
It has to have it turned in by April 8th.
The when do we have to take delivery?
Well, it has to be delivered. You will be, you will not be required to purchase 100% of your requested tonnage, oh, if the vendor fails to deliver it by December 3rd. Hang on a second. Summer fill-up contract will be issued for bid sometime around April 15th, and it's structured to be effective from the date of award to October 31st.
What's the minimum on that?
I don't think there is a minimum. In the past, there hasn't been, just had, minimum tonnage is 200, or 22 tons, which is one truckload.
Yeah.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, I said, at least on, at least one truckload.
So you want to do just one.
Do we have to lock into the quantity for that?
Yeah.
Does it have any pricing schedule on there?
No.
I think they get a price after this.
Yeah, they see how many people are participating, and then they get a price.
I'll make my point there. Would I get one load, it would be 20 tons, probably, around there.
I'll stack in it.
Do we roll call? Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And then I had, I don't know, I think everybody received this email from Kurt, from the engineer's office about Township Rural Safety Workshop that's being held on April 16th from 8:30 to 1:30. We need to RSVP by April 1st if you want to go. That's what they're talking about. That was all I had.
I have a couple things, but they'll fall under zoning appeals, zoning board commission. One of the things I had is, for the Easter egg hunt this year, I stopped up with Kroger and Hebron and asked them if they'd be able to help us, help us out in the Easter egg hunt, if they'd be able to donate anything to us. Sold out a little paperwork they had, and they were able to donate $20 to us, so $20 probably go towards white candy to help fill the eggs. What is that? That's all I have.
Yeah, the organizational meeting was held with the Licking County National Road Sale. Anybody that's interested that wants to attend the next meeting, the next one's April 17th at 10:00 a.m. at the Hebron Building, and we always invite anybody to come to that to put it, put, it's for the ninth year this year. Amber Courtview, I checked that, don't think it's been updated since March 6th. Bowling Green Township versus CMI, the update on that is Judge Brandstuhl in the East courtroom at 1:30 on April 11th, 2014. Only other legal update that I have is I did speak with Amy regarding the concern with the Bowling Green Township Park Committee records. The fiscal officer has all that. I did want to ask you if you got the copies that Barb had wanted on that. Did you get that taken care of?
Not yet.
Because she wanted a copy of the calendar and also receipts that she never got copies of from the last period.
Shouldn't the receipts be part of our records?
The ones she turns in to you, I understand you made copies in the past and gave to her.
Yes, so shouldn't we get the originals also? Is there any reason?
Didn't she give those to you? Didn't she give you the originals?
She gives me the originals to make a copy, and then I give her the originals back, which means she has all the originals.
I don't know. I know she doesn't have the most recent, what she requested was a copy of the most recent ones that you normally give her back.
But why would she need them now? Shouldn't the township have the originals?
Well, it's a records request technically. I think she wants to make sure that she has documentation showing that she has proof that she provided, there were a lot of accusations made, and that, you know, it is a record request that we need to fill. As far as record requests go, I had asked for some copies of tapes. Do you have those yet or?
I don't have those with me tonight.
When will I have those?
I'll get them to you. I'll bring them down here by the end of the week.
And Licking County Plan and Commission, they sent their agenda. There was nothing on the, a couple days ago they had their meeting, there was nothing on the agenda for Bowling Green. This is a copy of, in fact, I think it was January, Gary Stepp had asked me to give you this record request.
And I'm working on that, and I will contact him when it's finished.
I looked over what it was, and it looks pretty simple. What's the holdup on it?
I'll contact him when I'm finished.
Okay. Well, I want copies of the same things he's asking for. I think these are good things to know. And the, only other thing I had, I wanted to request that the board put on the agenda for next month to discuss the Bowling Green Township Community Building Reservation Application. I think it's, it's been several years. Looks like it wasn't updated since 2010, with some different changes and things. I'd like to request to put that on the agenda. That's it for me on correspondence.
The sensor don't request. Hey Jeff, I would like a copy of that tape of our conversation on the phone, because that there don't work.
Yeah, it does now.
No, it don't.
It does.
I copied that, and there's been several people trying to get on there. I can't get it.
You have to type it in exactly.
I did.
It's there, Dan.
No, it ain't.
It is.
He's asking.
I want a copy of it.
It's right there, Dan.
It is not.
I'm not going to argue with you. I know it is, so you wanted it, you got it.
He's making a record request to you, Jeff.
Yeah.
How can you deny that?
I've already provided it.
This is a record request? This, this right here?
Would you like me to take it from the private mode to the public mode, and then everybody can?
I don't care.
Get on there and hear your?
It wouldn't make no difference to me.
Okay. All you have to do, Dan, is type it in the browser. You need an internet connection, type it in just like that. That's why I wrote it out, because it's long and it, you know, it doesn't make sense. It's a URL.
I did, it didn't work.
You've got to do it exactly.
I did.
So you're saying that that's a public record right there? Anybody with a computer can get on that site?
Yeah, anybody that types that in can get into that and watch it. It's an unlisted.
Okay.
Doesn't work.
It don't work.
Anybody in the ring have a smart thing?
I'm looking it up now. Please do, because I looked it up, and it doesn't work.
You have to type it in exactly.
It's just not made, not finding it.
But I don't think that's sufficient enough for a public record request for somebody. Absolutely not.
Think as you will.
Okay. Okay, safety, I think everything's all, trucks and stuff, aren't they?
Yeah, I saw a lot of potholes. We're doing all right on that.
Is it warm in here?
Yes.
Or is it just because I'm sitting by her?
Want to turn it down a little?
You don't want to stay?
No, it ain't no good. Zoning?
Sorry?
Zoning?
Zoning, yes. I gave you copies of the plan. Four permits were done.
Versus copy.
Have one.
One for Mark Thurmer. He had an add-on on the porch on Rankin Road. One for Timothy and Lunning in construction on Mount Ferry. One for Skinner, which is an add-on in the shed on Main Street in Brownsville, and Tim Longshore, and it's a rebuild due to a fire, which is on Shelley Road. I also completed the timeline that was requested from the prosecuting attorney for address 16246 Laurel Hill, and it was submitted to her. I'm waiting on further action from her. I'm also working on a timeline for 14282 National Road, and she would like to have that within two weeks, so that we're not bombarded on too many court hearings at one time. If you notice, I sent a violation out, and I did it through regular mail. Could not find a number or any point of contact for the Thur, for Mark Thurmer. He contacted me immediately and re-resolved the violation.
Okay.
What was the violation? Is it because?
We have a copy of the violation right there. I gave it to you.
The planning commission, I mean, our comprehensive plan that hadn't done anything, has it?
Well, we're actually going to be having a meeting before long. I'm not sure when yet, but I will contact Jenny, so it's advertised.
No, there were a couple things, there was a couple things under zoning board and stuff. Under the zoning board, I had a letter here that was handed to me, says that, actually, it says, "Rondival would like to fill the vacant seat in the zoning board. Gary Stepp's term has expired." That was given to me today.
Still want to be on.
Okay, more than one person in the last row.
I moved to, to extend Gary Stepp's, it would get from the, from the, whatever time it was expired to the five-year expiration in the schedule that we have. I moved to extend the extension on Gary Stepp to fill the next term.
Do we have a paper on that?
When did it, when did it officially expire, or does it expire?
I'm not sure. I didn't bring my list with me.
Jenny?
We've, we've had that happen in the past, where they have actually expired, and we were told by the legal counsel that until they're taken off or they are, they quit, then they're technically still there, it just needs renewed.
Right now.
Whether it's expired at this point or not, it doesn't really even matter.
Right now, Gary Stepp's, it says expired 2012.
Is that the most current?
February 28th, 2012.
Well, if that's the most current list, you probably have a few more on there that have expired.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
But I doubt that's the most current. It doesn't make sense. Does that have an updated date on it that you did it last? So you don't know when that was done?
No, but that's up Gary Stepp, Tom Robb, Shannon DeVall, Yedda Pelts, Dee Cryer, and Mark Callow. That was the zoning commission.
You probably want to check your official list, wherever that is.
Yeah, it's at home.
Well, maybe we better get the official list, do it next month?
Yeah.
Table, table till next month.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Under the zoning appeals, it says, "Trustees, two seats on the zoning appeals board have expired. Jeff Baird and Mike Zensmeister. Neither have, neither have expressed an interest in remaining on the board. Ed Monroe and Thomas Clayton would like to fill these seats with Jack Hedges alternate moving to a full member, Ed becoming a full member, and Thomas as an alternate."
I would say treat that the same way as the other one.
I can assure you that that is an accurate list, because we just had a meeting last year.
This does seem more, I mean, this seems accurate to me, too. Patty Bowlen is chair, Dave Skinner vice chair, Mike Zensmeister's clerk, Lee Ratburn, and then Jeff Baird, and then Jack was the alternate. And?
And we do need to have a meeting, so we're a viable board, so I do need to have these members replaced.
So there are totaled with both boards, including alternates, how many open positions? Because there's five plus two alternates on both boards, there's a total of 14 people. How many do we have that don't have an expiration? Okay. Like I say, we need to.
Are you guys going to have a meeting for next month?
Treat that the same as zoning appeals, then zoning the same.
One of the ones for the board of appeals expired.
Jeff Baird's expired February 26th, 2013. Zensmeister expired February 26th, 2014.
You haven't talked with anybody, I assume, to see if they still want on it?
I haven't, no.
I think it'd be the right thing to do to talk to those other individuals. Gary's here tonight. Sounds like he's expressed his interest to continue. The other two, we need to know that answer to.
You have current people who are here that want to fill positions that are open, and it's a good idea, in my opinion, to have new members on the board instead of keeping the same people on all the time.
You speaking on behalf of your board, or?
I am speaking on, as chair of my board, yes.
Is that you as an individual, or is your board, did your board meet and have a consensus over that?
No, we have not yet.
Okay. So it's your opinion? Your personal opinion?
You have a question? In reference to the board?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you're on a board, zoning board of commissions, or even the appeals board, maybe you guys can talk to prosecuting attorney or I can, on anybody that's in violations of anything within the zoning, shouldn't be on boards. If you're in violation, you're not honoring the boards.
That's right. This forecourt should know better.
Mr. President, are we having an open forum now, or is this a board discussion? Mr. President, no, you're not the president. Just Mr. Ben does. Is this open discussion now?
I was waiting on a response, please. Mr. Corpenney, can you let me answer me? Thank you.
We're going to table this for the next, next meeting, when we've got a record of all the people in here.
Should I get with prosecuting attorney?
Yeah, yeah, talk to the prosecutor.
Why would we send the zoning inspector to do that when one of us could?
Because the deal's with zoning.
I'd be happy to do it, it would save us the hours and time.
I'll be happy to do it as well, so we don't get wrong answers.
We pay, we pay the zoning inspector hourly. We have, we're paid salary, I'd be happy to do it.
Dan, I can assure you, because Jenny will tell you, I had requested an official copy from her last month. She gave me the copy. The people on my board, those terms have expired. My board is current. I do know that those two seats have expired. I am able to fill those seats. We need to have a meeting, so that we're a legal viable board. We need to do that probably within the next 30 days before you meet again.
They're required, perhaps?
They have a viable board. We've gone into this before. The members that have expired are still viable. You can call a meeting if you need to, and you have five members that you can call on, and all you need's a quorum, which would be three of them. And you just have to follow the appropriate advertising rules that Jenny could assist you with. So the fact that we have members that are, have expiration dates does not keep you from holding a meeting if you feel you need to have one.
I think it's better that we talk to, talk to them, see if they're showing us. See if you can push a meeting till right after the next meeting, and I'd like to speak with these two people.
Are you going to be the one to do that, Mr. President, to contact them, if somebody needs a sign to do that task?
I just said I would like to speak with these two people, so I would speak to them.
You just said you'd do it.
Well, it's more than two people. We have also alternates. That's why I'm asking, how many total positions are there? In the past, when we had multiple ones, we actually did put the call out for anybody that was interested, if, if the existing members didn't want to continue.
I'll check the list, and I'll let Ben know who's expired and.
Well, I'd like to let the board know, not just men.
Is he on the board? Unfinished. Okay. What's true?
If we're going to advertise that we have openings, I think that we should do it prior to the next meeting, to give the public opportunity to know that these positions may be available. That's if all the existing people don't want to continue. And then if you can check how many alter, at one point, I know there was still an opening for an alternate, ended up, not sure it was ever filled. If you can check, check that, too. It's always a good idea to get all the alternate spaces filled, too. What was that, Ben? Sorry, I didn't hear you, Ben.
I have nothing to say to you, Jeff.
Okay. Unfinished business.
Excuse me. Just pop this topic. Why would somebody want to go rob a bank and have the bank robber watch the bank and have somebody on the board of zoning breaking at the law and still have them on the board? I mean, it don't make sense. You're asking two robbers run around and scare it forever.
Problem with what you're saying, Mr. DeVall, is you are making assumptions.
So I'm not.
Of somebody's allegations being true. These issues, from what I'm getting on the report, the zoning inspector, she's working on timelines on them, people are not guilty of anything when it's an allegation. And that could also hold true for our board members.
I got lied. I tried by their stuff. I can say. So I'm not lying.
Jenny thinks that allegations, that you're charged for violations. It's not an allegation. It's a violation. And you're fully aware of that, Mr. Corpenney?
No, you don't speak for me.
You are fully aware of the violation. You've had them multiple times.
Their allegations.
Let's move on to unfinished business.
They aren't violations, not allegations.
Mr. President, could you maintain order, please?
Move on to unfinished business. The trash.
It's still standing, just waiting till April 11?
It's not an allegation.
Anything from 11, 12?
When, when do we have to?
That's when it goes to court.
Oh, I'm talking about the?
I put that underneath.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay.
Were you talking, were you talking about something different?
It's under new business.
What's that?
Trash contract. Okay, now we'll move on to new business. The trash contract.
It expires in August, so if we want to... Put that out for Ben again, then we need to do that. If you don't want to, that's fine, but we need to discuss it.
I'd like to hold a, I think we should hold a public hearing to see if people are still interested in doing it. I think that's, of course, more to do that, to get a census of the people, whether they do want to continue doing it, don't want to do it.
Just want to have a special meeting to have a, to meet for the trash contract?
A lot of people come voice their opinions, whether they like it, don't like it, think we should do it, shouldn't do it, happy with it, not happy with it, you know, whatever.
Okay.
It expires in August?
Yes.
What's the date on August, like fifteenth or something?
I'm not sure. I think it's August eleventh, but I don't know for sure.
If it expires in August, we'd have to bidify probably June.
At the latest.
July to award in August, open and award in July.
My suggestion would be to bring a copy of the existing contract and the potential new contract, and make a copy for each trustee and have it at the next meeting.
What do you think about setting up something like that?
Yeah, I'd say we just set up a date and just advertise it. And people come in and put their input out what they... They want it or don't want it.
Sooner than later.
Yeah.
What, next month, April?
I think we could set a date next month after we have a chance to review it as a board.
Can't hurt to get public's opinion.
Yeah, what do we need?
All we're getting, public opinion, is all we're after.
That'd be good, but it'd be nice to have the details in front of us prior to doing that. Then we can even make it available to the public, they can see the potential contract that would be possibly used again.
Sure, I could do that, too, I mean, that's not hard to make.
Sorry.
April, May, June, July, August. I'd rather bid sooner than later.
Yeah.
Bid it sooner for that bid.
Yeah, I don't want to wait until, I don't want to award it in July. I would rather award it in June.
We can say that...
Would it, would it be better to have a, have the meeting date on a weekend or something? Like on a Saturday or something? You think people would be more apt to come to it on the weekend?
I would suggest that we hold it on the last Tuesday of the month and either hold it before or after this normal meeting.
You're gonna have more people come on a weekend than you are during the week.
Don't know, we've never done it.
What do people in here think, I mean?
I think you ought to have it in a big building down here, because you may have more than it's fit to just...
Well, most definitely, but what, I mean, do people think a weeknight or a weekend?
Saturday. 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 Weekend.
Saturday or something like that.
Saturday evening.
There's a lot of people that work late.
Yeah. Well, if we pick Saturday in April, we have the fifth, the twelfth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth.
Nineteenth is Easter egg hunt.
Fifth and the twelfth, I recall, you'll have to talk to Mrs. Watkins, but I think they're both booked.
Let's check what the, check what the moon, the last Saturday.
It's the twenty-sixth.
Check what, see what...
Then we can discuss what the meeting, because there'd be a meeting after that.
Why don't we set the meeting next month?
Another twenty-sixth open.
I mean, at the next, at the next month's meeting, why don't we set the date?
It's a rain date for it.
Okay, but that, but that's in the morning, so it'd be open. Even if we did it on the, well, the nineteenth's a date for it, let's do it on the twenty-sixth.
Just check what dawn, say for...
Well, they said that it's reserved for a rain date for the Easter egg hunt.
Oh, okay.
So it just said it rained for the nineteenth, it's gonna be in the morning anyways, so...
Okay, well, they won't hurt nothing in the evening anyway.
What time?
Probably, what, seven o'clock or so.
That's one.
Is that official?
I'm gonna request a motion in a second, and if you would, please read it.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We have it for last Saturday at seven o'clock.
What are we having?
Discussion about the...
Public hearing.
This is April, end, right?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
For a public discussion on the track.
To have a meeting. Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yeah.
Check what dawn, make sure, make sure everything's okay.
He's back there.
He's earned.
If it's not, just let us know.
What is the date of the last Saturday?
It's twenty-sixth.
At seven P.M.
That's probably, you don't have to do that.
I'll put it on the sign. I'll put it on the left side. Also, under new business, I have, I would, I need a motion to accept a permanent appropriations for two thousand fourteen, and I gave everybody a copy of our appropriations for the year.
I make a motion to accept the future appropriations.
Say this is for the rest of the year?
Yeah. Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes. I had Jenny check, see what we have on that trust, that trust, it's around fifteen thousand or...
Sixteen.
Fifteen thousand. We're gonna just go ahead and pay it off, give it off as well, because the money's already appropriated for the year.
That would actually save us some in interest.
So it's already appropriated, it's already appropriated for the year, so we have the money in the account, we carried money up from last year. So if we're gonna pay it off, we're not paying interest on it, right?
Just over sixteen thousand.
How much will we have to look on the road?
Well, we're still gonna have the same, that's not gonna affect it, because that money's already appropriated for that.
We'll still have probably what?
Effective amount.
Just seventy thousand per road.
Looks like it's gonna be more like sixty thousand. Well, there's contracted services out of the gasoline fund, the fifty-two thousand. And then the contracted services in... Motor vehicle, which actually is only two thousand. But then I have audited services, which I'm not sure why I did that, because we don't have an audit this year. So I could transfer that back to contracted services. That's eight thousand. I just noticed that. I don't know why I put money in audited, audited services, because we don't have an audit this year.
Because that would give us right around sixty.
Yeah.
This is what we're projecting, yes, that's what we have.
That's the unaccommodating, but yes. Final appropriations is what we're looking at. That's the appropriated amount for that.
Gotcha.
Which, right now, is the same, because we haven't spent any money out of that contracted services.
Right.
And the only, the only fund that we can't touch contracted services in is the fire fund.
Right. That won't mind.
Yeah. Okay. I'll tell him he said so. Which I have their checks tonight, too, which aren't on the back of the sheet, so those are the only checks that aren't on the sheet. Fire company checks.
What are the numbers on those? Any amounts?
Are you interested in paying ahead on it?
I don't care. You can pay it back.
I'd like to pay it off.
That'd be fine.
This is the final three of the year here for them?
The final? No, that's the first one.
But we can move money around, though.
That's the first time of the year. Yes, well, we can move it within the, I can move anything in the general fund. I can't move something from the general to the motor vehicle. Like that audited services, I don't know why I did that, so I can just transfer that back to contracted services. Motor vehicle. Two. Audited services.
Eight thousand. That's gonna be almost a year to pay it off, isn't it?
On what? Yeah.
So that's gonna go back to you.
It'll go back to contracted services, which is done on the road.
Right.
Or, yeah, whatever.
You want the half of it off? The whole thing off? What do you got?
We can pay the whole thing if you want. I mean, like you said, it's, the money is appropriated anyway. Yeah, for the year, but I mean, it's there and we can use it.
If it's eight, hopefully, it'll mark eight seventy-one?
Eight seventy-seven.
Working on the ten thousand for the year. So we got a year, almost a year's pay, year and a half.
Maturity date is October fourth, two thousand fifteen.
So year and a half, we got that down?
Yeah. And currently, we owe sixteen thousand, fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. That was after the February payment was made. No, that was after the March payment was made.
How much will that save a night or... Or they'll tell you how much that payoff is, won't they?
Yeah, if I call, yeah, they'd tell me, but the interest on this was, for the payment, was sixty-two, twenty.
It's getting less every time.
Yeah, each payment you make, it's getting less. The interest is four point five.
We carry some money over from last year, yes.
Yeah, about thirty.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and pay, go ahead and pay the red carpet off.
And I'll second it.
Because you put the numbers in that motion.
We'll have to call and get exact payout, huh?
What's the approximate total payout?
Sixteen thousand. We'll do a roll call.
You don't, before you go to roll call, you don't feel like that's gonna interfere with any projects we might, we're covering on funds for any other projects we might need?
No. It's not gonna interfere.
Okay, so I need to know.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes. With that, three?
When is that, when are you gonna cut that check?
Well, not today.
Be it next month, or?
Yeah, I'll just have it at the next meeting. And we'll sign it then.
Guess I might have something right about newspaper picked up for a coffee and a half, or whatever.
They won't write over that.
I don't have anything else under, under new business?
Do you have any under new business?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we get it on the agenda to talk about the community building rules.
Okay, we're gonna have a comment. I have one. We can answer the DM, but, uh... Jeff, you're gonna walk and try typing in, but I've done it every which way you sound. That, that link does not work. Does not provide video. It says not found. So, you playing a game with Dan then, or what? Want me to type it in in front of the video camera, so you document it? I don't handle that. That's a pretty simple records request when you plan on filling it.
I've already discussed this matter, can't...
Well, it doesn't work, I mean...
Just for you, Shannon, I'll go home tonight, I'll go from unlisted to, to public. And then you can hear how's that...
Well, you see, it isn't open to the public. I think this gentleman right here, like you.
It is.
It was open to the public.
It is. All you have to do, it's, it's called unlisted.
He said, "Anybody in this room can access," and you said, "Yes, sir."
Yes, you can. You can access it right here. You've already got a copy, and you can spread it around.
I've already got the news right here.
You gotta type it in, uppercase, exactly like this.
Yep, I did.
Like I told you, I'd be happy to switch it from unlisted to public.
Yep, so CS is not public.
No, it's, it's a setting that's on YouTube.
Yeah.
Unlisted is open to anyone that types this in. Public means that it's advertised, and then you can hear Dan's conversation. It'll be on my channel, and anyone can go and listen to the conversation that Dan wants a copy of, okay? That's, it's really pretty simple, it's not complicated.
Okay.
You acknowledge me?
Go ahead, Ford.
Okay, I have a question. Earlier during this meeting, Mr. Corpenning indicated to Jenny that a records request was made from Barb Wiseman on copies of receipts, and he made the statement, "She will fill it." Now, Dan has asked repeatedly for a public records copy, and Mr. Corpenning refuses to fill it. The copy needs to be brought forward and handed to you in your hand. That's a public records copy request. You asked for it, you should have it in your hand. Correct or not?
Evidently, we can call and tell them, and that's fine, I guess.
So what he's telling her and what you are requesting, and he's replying back to you, he has double standards. Okay, he's gonna tell her she will fill it, but he will not fill the request you've asked for.
I've actually...
Am I, am I correct on this?
He has not filled my records request either.
You are not correct, but you're certainly walking to your opinion.
I'm talking to Dan the president, not Jeff Corpenning.
It is correct.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure that is correct. I also have one more thing I'd like to bring up before you take me down. I have a letter here to the trustees of Bowling Green Township and residents. March twenty-second, the friends of Bowling Green Township hosted a community cook-off. The event came off great. Residents participated, we had nine chili participants. In front of each chili can, we had a monetary donation can. Whoever had the fullest can won the chili cook-off. It was quick and easy, it was fun for the community. We had a fifty-fifty also, we collected seventy-two dollars for that fifty-fifty, so the split was thirty-six dollars. Our total intake was forty-nine dollars, and our total intake was eighty-five dollars. Okay, this money is gonna be used for a community spaghetti dinner. And we're hoping to have that in May. The Easter egg hunt is still on for April the nineteenth. Registration starts at eleven. We will have games, the Easter Bunny will be participating in games and activities, and we're gonna have a great community gathering.
Hey, Barb.
And the seniors will do a bake sale.
Seniors gonna do a bake sale, about nine o'clock.
Nine, yeah, they're starting at nine.
They'll start around...
Mr. President, I've got some questions on that regard. I think there's a questions that should be asked. First of all, I don't know who, are you the spokesperson for the group? Are you the president, or what is the?
That's irrelevant, I think.
Who's he talking to?
I'd like to know who's, who the spokesperson is, whether they have...
I just gave you a public comment, that was a, we're a group.
Okay, and I think it's important to ask whether you have a five oh one C three, and if you cover insurance for these events that you're calling public.
Yep.
Did you have with Barb?
Don't need to. Do you have insurance, too, for any of your public events?
I don't hold public events.
You don't?
If you're referring, if you're referring to the past Hart Committee efforts, they were, it's quite clear that subdivision of the board of trustees, they were a governmental committee. And, yes, we do have insurance as a township.
For the community of Bowling Green Township.
So, but the answer's no, you don't have insurance, and your entity's not a nonprofit. So, but the answer's no, you don't have insurance, and your entity's not a nonprofit.
You didn't say we were a profit, we're nonprofit.
That's what a five oh one C three is, I believe.
We're just volunteers, trying to get the community together and have fun.
Why do you got something against that, Jeff Corpenning?
He's not in charge.
I don't think anyone said they had anything against it.
Were you complaining about it?
No, I asked my questions, I've got nothing further to ask.
Any more public comments?
Yes, yes, right here. Did you all three look at the past pictures and the latest pictures of our property? Did you, did you guys look at it? Should you look at them?
I've never got it to look at.
The oldest one that the newest one is being compared to, I think there was six of the oldest one. And then there was numerous of the new one. They were taken at two different seasons of the year. The, the oldest ones were taken more of a, kind of like the same area. And the newest ones were taken clear over here and over here and down the driveway and all over here, which they cannot even compare, okay? And I was told that it looks worse in the new ones than it did the old ones, but they're two different seasons, the trees are bare in the new ones, the trees are in full bloom in the old ones. And some of the stuff was still there, and I know it was there, but you couldn't see that it was there. And it didn't go as far. Okay, now, my other question is, when, when we tried to start, um, conforming to these requests, we had one of the worst winters possible. Bob has been working and working, working. Now, are we gonna go to court on the pictures taken three or four months ago? Or are we gonna go to court on what it looks like now? And then the next, the last question I have is, is a person only in violation if somebody complains? Or are you in violation, if you're really in violation, just in violation? Or are you only in violation if your neighbor complains?
Yeah. I don't, that's up to zoning, what the zoning says.
You guys have not even looked at the pictures then?
I, I've already answered that, yes, I have.
Both sets.
I saw the pictures that were sent to me for some reason, registered mail, that were on that disc. I understand they were sent to you or you had them too.
New ones and old ones?
Uh, that disc, I think, had old ones, if there were new ones on there.
There was only about six old ones.
I didn't see any timestamp on any of them.
All the tree leaves were out, you could not see the same things. So, you cannot honestly say it's worse than the first pictures because you can't see it. And it's not as big a territory. Now, if you could come over and look at the place, you would see that when the weather got, where you could eat, actually do anything besides deep snow or mud, you would see that if you're taking us to court on the pictures, it doesn't even look like that. And the pictures were taken in the part of the year that you couldn't do anything to change it, it was impossible. December, there was a few good, nice days in December. As soon as the snow melted, then the pictures were taken. But there was no time, like, between December and now, he's worked and worked. So, is it gonna be what it looks like now, or is it gonna be what it looks like back in December?
Here's an easy explanation, there was three years between the fixtures, right?
Three years? I don't know.
Okay, how many years were between the fixtures? That's how long you had to remedy the problem.
No one has ever written down on a list exactly what is in violation, except, this is what we're told. You can't have this sign, you can't have this culvert pipe, and you can't have your tractors, and you can't have this car, which is licensed, and you can't have this, and you can't have that, and you can't have this, and you can't have that. And then, you cannot have a junkyard and a, uh, junkyard and a salvage business. But when you have to have junk cars and selling junk cars to have a junkyard and salvage business? I mean, I, I just don't understand, I mean, we've got some recycled metal, but we're not running a junkyard. I don't understand why I don't have anything in writing saying exactly what the violation is. That's pretty broad. It's very, very broad. You cannot operate a junkyard and a salvage yard, but it's very broad. What, what things is it, exactly?
It's been explained over and over.
Has it? Okay.
Okay.
Now?
Yeah, I recently had a plan on building a building up there and a little lean-to, and I didn't know, you know, what was involved or who was involved with what first day. So I called Barb the zoning lady, she come out and showed me and answered all my questions I had. And, uh, she did a very professional job and, uh, I wanna thank her personally for coming out and showing me everything and getting me going up there.
Maybe we'll get that to happen too.
Okay, any other public comments?
Yes, I, I don't have a comment. I got a, it's happening, okay? Now, I'm going to quit my towing business this year. And I'm going to build, I'm not thinking about it, I'm going to build a sixty by sixty building out by my crib, down my driveway away from my house. And I'm going to build, uh, sell pigs, I'm gonna raise pigs. Now, I wanna, what, I wanna get this building, do I want to get the, uh, permit to build the building? Or do I want? Who said that?
You don't need one.
You don't need a permit.
Okay, I didn't ask you anything. But do I, if I get a permit, if I get a permit to build this building?
Well, I think you're a smart ass.
Please, you have three minutes, you've got three minutes without anybody else watching.
But, I wanna know whether I need to, if I get a permit to build the building, then, then if I decide two, three years down the road, I don't wanna raise pigs anymore, I can use this building for whatever I want.
You'd have to take those questions as zoning inspector, I think you'd have to change the use on the building, is what you'd have to do, is that correct?
That's, that's on the record. You can do this.
But you'd have to do a change of use of the building.
Okay, then, then how do, how do you go about doing that?
I, I don't know all the specifics to that.
You just, somebody will find this out.
You'd have to talk to the zoning inspector.
No, I'm talking to you, I'm paying you, I'm paying you.
And they're paying the zoning inspector.
I might, well, I'll give it to you, it's you guys' job, not the zoning inspector's.
Well, I'm gonna refer you to a zoning inspector, who's there to do the inspections.
Initially, Bob, if you're building an agricultural building, you don't, you don't need a permit to build that pig barn.
But I want to know, I wanna get the permit, I don't care, it's, it's something. But I wanna get the permit, so if I wanna use the building for something else, then it's already done. My opinion.
When you fill out, when you fill out your permit, you're gonna have to put on there what it's, what it's for. And if it's for ag, then you wouldn't be, you wouldn't pay.
It still probably end up having to be ag, whatever you used it for, Bob.
But I can use the building for whatever I want.
For ag.
Ag, okay.
Agriculture.
He put his tractors in and...
Or, I can put a bell hay.
Yep, you can put tractors, you can put hay and agriculture stuff.
Good, and that's it. Can't have nothing else in that building.
So put some pigs in.
Remember what you say now, remember what you say, two, three years down the road. Can't put, nothing but agriculture in this building.
Put chickens in their legs.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm sure, I'm not, I'm not playing games.
What, what are you doing now? What are you reading around the bush about? What do you want, what do you wanna do in three or four years with it? What are your plans?
I have no idea.
If he decided later on...
If you want an honest answer, I'm asking for an honest answer.
I don't know what I would put in it. I just don't know.
Well, you have to conform to the zoning rules, so if you take out a permit to build an agricultural building, so be it.
Do you need a permit or not, for agriculture, for your zoning inspector?
Right, it, there's gonna be, it's not, there's no charge for it.
Get a permit with no charge.
I would have planned to, on that part. And, okay, I've got another, this is... Shut up, whoever said that.
No, you do that. That's enough.
I'm calling your houses, Jack, keep your mouth shut.
That's enough.
Why don't you just let a person ask their question?
Well, he's spoken for about ten minutes.
I don't care what you say.
People were talking.
Good grief! There's, uh, an organization, amongst the township, that calls themselves Friends of Brown, Brown, uh, Bowling Green Township.
Okay.
Okay, right? Okay, now, on, on the road that I live on, it's not my road, but I live there, someone has been dumping tires, gallons of tires, trash, all up and down Rankin Road, I mean Laurel Hill Road, where the water is.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to, as Friends of Bowling Green Township, to get that taken care of, it looks terrible.
Well, for one, you'd have to take that, take that to the county, that's a county road.
Oh, my lord.
Okay.
Do we take time with Bob's house?
You, you call the county, county, it's not Bowling Green Township, call the county.
It's county road, they're gonna maintain it.
It's...
The road don't need maintaining.
It's bags of trash.
Somebody's throwing their trash out and dumping tires all over the place.
Is it in the right of way, the road right of way? It's not, it's on private property?
In the ditch.
They call the property, I don't know.
They'll call Mr. Story, tell him to claim that.
It's on private property, call the health department, you know, if that's what you need to do.
I'm not gonna do it.
We don't have it, it's not our road. It's a county road.
That's fine. Okay. No problem. Anybody else?
Hi, Dan, this is only issue of the board. Coming up, coming up. Years ago, same thing happened, the people, all of a sudden, didn't have a permit. I asked back then, who is responsible to keep the records up? And responsible to bring it to the board of trustees, it says they have terms expired in it and advertised, you know, people in the community know that, you know, somebody's available to be going on these seats. Over and over, same thing happened again now, where somebody's expired for a year or two. How the hell does that keep happening? I mean, who is actually responsible to do this? Every other township I see, Licking Township, they advertise and things like that, about open positions. Why is it that we constantly have the same problem where people are expired for maybe a year or two?
Well, one reason is, is...
Is it responsible for the board trustees, the fiscal officer, or is it the, the board president? Who is it?
Some of those boards only have a meeting once a year, they're required to have a yearly meeting, right?
Who is it?
Just here they have. So if they're only meeting once a year, and then they're gonna get out their information, like, well, you know, it's been a year, so this person's expired.
Well, who keeps the record of this fire tax period?
Fiscal officer.
Okay.
So what are you asking?
Well, if they only meet once a year, you're saying they're not responsible, they only meet once a year. So that, you see, that means somebody else has to take responsibility.
I didn't, I didn't say they were or weren't responsible.
So you're saying nobody, who's responsible? Who is, that's what I'm asking, just, not this, well, they only meet once a year, so we don't know. Who is it?
Fiscal officer maintains the records well. In, in the past, at the organizational meetings, it's generally when I've brought it up. Uh, the last organizational meeting, debates, the times were changed, I was given conflicting information.
Yeah, yeah, he wasn't there this year, so...
So, but that's normally when I suggest the board look at it.
Something that, that's like, you absolutely, you definition of standing. You keep doing the same thing over and over again and expect different results. We're doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results.
We'll, we'll work through it, we'll, we'll work through it, don't you worry, we'll get it taken care of, we'll get the spots filled.
That's right. Okay, any other public comments?
I would, I would like to know the status of my, then, records request from Torpenning for the videos that you've been filmed. You are the only person that has copies of those, and I gave you a written records request.
I see it's still sitting here, that was addressed last month, gave it to the fiscal officer. If she feels like she wants to create those records and help you out, she can do so. She would have to get them like anyone else, take them off of, uh, where they're published on YouTube, however that's done.
You are the person recording the video, you are the person making the video of an official meeting. You have access and the only person with access to those records.
That's not true.
I requested from you a copy of every one of those videos, including the park commission. It has now been thirty days and I have had no response from you.
Yes, you had, you had immediate response at the last meeting. Your note there was handed to the fiscal officer, she handles all the public record requests.
You're the one that has the records.
If she feels that she wants to create a public record for you and make a copy of what's published on YouTube for anybody to see, she's free to do so.
That's a violation of YouTube policy, we know that.
Yes. Plus, you might wanna check with the ACLU, Jeff.
No, maybe you should check with the ACLU.
I already have.
But you go right ahead, you do what you need to do. Records request go to the fiscal officer, if the fiscal officer does not have that record, she can't fill it. And if she has issues with that, but she...
You are making the video as a trustee. You're making the video as a trustee.
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are.
You are making a record when you record it.
Yeah.
I'm tired of it, I'm...
And you're sitting at that table.
We'll take care of it.
You have to fill the request.
What's what?
Fill the request.
What does it say here?
Yes, you're making the copy, you are the trustee sitting at that table. I requested from you a copy.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask you to follow up to this meeting.
Well, why don't you just make your request in a style? Okay, anybody else?
What are we gonna do about though?
Our board, I make a motion, please. There you go, right, Dan.
I want the video, I probably gonna answer my question.
Keep talking, Jeff, be yourself, keep going.
Nobody can answer, nobody answered me anything that I asked you.
I, I have seen the, the pictures. The pictures I saw were not time stamped, I don't know when they were taken.
Your second question? We can tell you when they were taken, they're in the minutes when they were taken, Jeff.
Okay, what I ask you is, you're, you're, you're sending this paperwork in to prosecute us, is it from pictures that were taken four months ago? Or is it what it looks like now, or, or what?
My understanding is where it stands right now, and what I'm hearing from the zoning inspector, because I have enough talk for Amy, and I haven't heard anything else from the board on that topic, is that they're trying to put together a timeline now, and the zoning inspector has to put her timeline together to get to Amy, so she can proceed forward with whatever it is the majority of the board monitor to proceed with.
That it looks worse from the second pictures, you're saying?
She's supposed to put a timeline together, so I suppose that means she's supposed to say, these are the pictures from this time, and this is what they look like now.
Then I just explained to you that there were only six pictures in the first one?
I understand what you're saying, I'm just telling you all I know, that's all I can answer to it.
And they were only generalized in a smaller area, part of the area? And a lot of stuff was there in the first pictures or gone? But, no, no, you guys, nobody comes out to look at anything.
I have seen the pictures that were provided, that's all.
I did, I did hire a gentleman, a contractor, to haul away all of my valuable aluminum recyclable material.
Are you still the contact on that, Dan? Because up to this point, it's been you, because I think it's important that you relay the information to Amy that, that, apparently, there had been updates since the most recent pictures. I think it's only fair that...
Just like four months ago.
Yes, I have...
Are you still the contact, doing that?
I have all the receipts for our sold material.
And it was whether you could work in, not January of this year?
I'll tell you what, I'm not, Vice President's not being responsible, I'll call Amy myself. I'll get whatever questions I can, I can answer, but I'm not confidential, private, and I'll find out what I can on that. But I can't share any more than information than I have.
But you can share the videos that you have, since you claimed to be so...
Mr. President, who has the floor?
Well, since you interrupted when I had the floor, I waited till they finished, even though they interrupted me, and I had the floor, I had not yielded the floor. You claim to have transparency in government, yet you're not willing to fill a records request. You even, I have you on tape, you said, "I'm a trustee and I'm filming, I'm videoing the meeting." I have that on tape where you told the officer that when you called in, Jeff. So you were videoing as a trustee. That, you are the only person that has those records. I requested a copy of them. Officially, in writing, you have the copy. End of story, you either fill it or you don't, I want an answer.
I already answered your question.
You didn't.
Are you filling it, or are you refusing to fill it?
You better take that one to Amy, Jeff.
Are you filling it, or are you refusing to fill it?
I would suggest if the board or our fiscal officer has legal questions on this matter, that they contact their legal counsel, that's what our legal counsel is for.
Are you going to check with your legal counsel and give me an answer next month?
It would be the board that needs to do that, Mrs. Bowlin.
It's you that needs to do that.
You guys just as much authorities, everybody else, Jeff.
The request is to Corpenning.
The, the assistant prosecutor in the prosecutor's office represents this board. They do not represent individual trustees on any matters.
Okay.
Are you a member of the board?
Right, so what, what are you saying then?
I've already said, if, if you wanna move a motion to get legal opinion on, that would be my suggestion.
I would move a motion?
I'll make a motion that you fill Mrs. Bowlin's records request.
That's right.
It all stuck in it.
If Jenny doesn't have those, I'll make a motion, since you have those, and they were videotaped for historical purposes, which you have stated. Say you have, say you have, that you should fill Mrs. Volin's record request. You are the only one sitting at this table that has that ability.
Anybody that has internet access has that ability.
Open government.
What if somebody doesn't? Yeah, let's let the sunshine in, okay?
There you go, yay! Really, open government.
I don't have internet access, I do not either.
We had a motion made and seconded, I'd like to do roll call, Dan.
Would you please read the motion for the...
Ben made a motion for trustee Corpenney to fill Patty Volin's records request of the taped videos of the meetings. It was seconded by Dan, roll call, Dan.
Yep.
Jeff.
Abstain.
Ben.
Yes.
Can somebody answer my second question this time? Are you in violation only if somebody complains about you, or are you in violation? If you're in violation, why doesn't anybody do anything about the ones that no one complains about?
How are we supposed to do something if, if we don't know about it?
Well, you've got eyes, and so does she. I've, I've told, I've told her several times, she said there is no paper to fill out. And I've told her about a place that looks like a junkyard. Yeah, I wanna recheck that statement. Yes, you told me you were... You have never told me and told me of any violation, I told you here, recheck! I told her here, it's okay. No. Well, if nobody answers the question you had to ask for the second question, you did. Unless you can be in violation, that somebody will answer your questions. They won't even answer your question. Won't answer the question, will you? Don't answer the question, that's okay.
Mr. President, since the motion was made, the K bills are seconded, I've got a request from you as the president to try to maintain order in this room while we're doing these checks.
You can't control these people, just sign this check for them, in German.
First check that's come around to me is four three eight seven, Jack Richard Hedges, I'll make you some time sheets, please. Four three eight nine, Barbara Salee, same thing. Daniel Nelson Van Duren, four three nine zero, six twenty one forty two. MNCO, one hundred forty nine dollars, thirty four cents. Four three nine five, advertising. Both fire township trustees, this is for the fire contract, check four three nine nine, sixteen thousand, six hundred twenty six dollars. Check four three eight three, Ohio Public Energy Consortium, two hundred sixty dollars, forty cents, dinner life, OPEC funding fee. Check four three eight four, Ace Truck Equipment, three hundred fifty five dollars, or statement payment. Anglefield Road Company, four three eight two, three hundred thirty nine dollars, ninety cents, both here. What check is that, Danny?
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, how many...
Do you mind reading it, tell me what it says? Can I see it? I'd like to sign it. Check four three eight six, Jenny Devall, eight hundred ninety two dollars, twenty eight cents. Licking Township Trustees, four three nine seven, sixteen thousand, six hundred twenty six dollars, fire contract fee. Four three eight five, Jeffrey Decorpenning, this only shows one signature, uh, from one trustee, and Jane Devall. Six twenty three twenty one, check four three eight five. Which signature's missing, is that yours or Ben's? Whose is it? Does that, which signature is that?
All you need to do is add your signature, and then you can hash it.
I guess that's Ben's signature. Okay, when, when Dan comes back, I'll ask him about it again. Four three nine two, Smalls Asphalt Caving, four hundred ninety dollars, eighty cents for cord mix. What was the tonnage on this? Says quarter one. I'll keep going, four nine, uh, four three nine three, asphalt, five hundred dollars even, for cinders. Have the same question on that. Four three nine four, Barb Salee, one thirty five sixty, for time sheets. What happened to the other check that was here?
I don't know, Jeff.
So I'm not gonna have an opportunity to sign one of these payroll checks? No, I didn't, I haven't reviewed the time sheets. Four three nine six, thousand dollar limestone, one hundred five dollars, forty nine cents, limestone. I'm a hard fellow, ball. Quarter is twenty five tons, unit price is twenty dollars, total of five hundred. And then that's four three nine three, asphalt. Thank you. This one is for Smalls Asphalt, this is eight point three three as a salary, the rate sixty dollars, check's four ninety nine eighty. And that was four three nine two, asphalt. Don Watkins, so now we're down to my check. Nine times for me, and I still might not sign it. About three, two employees and the zoning inspector, we have time sheets here. Jack Hedges signed off by, looks like, cup signature. But I don't have a check here for Jack Hedges, so I can't sign that check. Don Watkins, I do have a check here for him.
I'm making a motion, it's German.
It's four three nine one, three hundred twenty three dollars, fifty one cents, with Don Watkins.
If you're worried about my check, I'd like it.
The time sheet says thirty two and a half dollars, it's signed by... I guess that's, I guess that's his signature.
You're fired tomorrow, note of last year.
Then let's check four three nine one for Don, Don Watkins, three twenty three fifty one. Where's the Hedges check, we have it stolen. Okay, so that takes us down to Barb Salee. These are time sheets here. We've got two checks for Barb Salee. One is for a hundred thirty five sixty, the other is for six fifty ninety seven. The lesser one is checked four three nine four, home universe with seventy five dollars a mileage, sixty dollars, sixty cents. Jenny, I asked last time, Jenny?
I'm listening.
Last time, if you had these, I'd ask for copies, I never got them. I'd like to have copies of these, and also the other time sheets, from this time and last time, I've already asked for... Are you listening? Okay. Only the chances you could get these to me prior to the meeting, so I can review them before meeting. When do you get these?
I got that on Sunday.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
That is when I get the work time, work time sheets also.
It would just make it a lot easier if I could see them and answer the meeting. Just leave them down here, let me know when you do. What's the deal with the copy that was donated to us? Didn't we put money into cartridges and things? Well, in that case, you're gonna, then you're gonna have to use the township copier and bring them back here.
So you want me to go to my house and have the copy and bring it back here?
Sure. Well, how else am I gonna be able to review it in advance of the meeting? I don't think it's unreasonable to do that. How is it unreasonable?
Okay, you come down here on Sunday, because that's when they're here, you take a mug and bring it back here.
You really want me to take a record out of this store?
Yeah, I know.
I wouldn't think you would. How can we make it convenient? How can we make that kind of work, that we put money into it? You don't happen to have, you don't happen to have the bell for the children, huh? The bell for the telephone? I didn't have it yet. I think that was part of the record request that Gary had earlier. So just to clarify, when, when these records I've asked for, when am I gonna be able to get them, bring them to the copies of these? You just give me a call, I can get them down there. So the motion was moved and seconded, but the lead was adjourned. You want me to say something after the... I would like records of ours due. There's a formation that I didn't sign, you're the manager.
I want to share the... It'll be next Tuesday, we got a chance. It'll be next two days. But right around this, that happens, there it is. All right, maybe you're not. When they even come out, they sign, they, 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 they.
This one is out here. Vice go get it. We've got a job, we're, 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 we're much working, we're...
He's a hot actually, he's... Can I come over here and turn the, the camera?
Don't touch my stuff.
It must be right there, it's right there.
Don't touch my property.
Take the goddamn thing and get out of here.
Sir, you need to give me my space.
You, the meeting's over.
This is a public building, you need to give me my space.
The meeting's over.
There's something you're in charge of.
Oh, you got your space. Don't touch it, don't touch it, okay?
You're in your block.
This is a public meeting.
You're allowed to do a meeting, you're allowed to do a meeting.
He's out of the, he's out of that structure. He does what he wants, he does what he wants. Why, it's over, you're... He didn't pull it back, but he's, he's probably got it on his block.
How you can have it?
That was, he's on...
I can't hear you, sir. No, I can't, you're gonna have to be a little louder.
I can't believe Jeff's daddy went to go protect him.
It is, it is. This is private property, I suggest you not damage it, and you go near it.
Well, nobody even touched it, Jeff.
Nobody touched it, I just said you not close to it, it's thirty five. Don't worry, it'll get that.
Don't worry, it's gonna get...
Tell him he want a copy.
Are you videotaping as a trustee? Come on.
Stop leaving me here, don't leave me, don't leave me.
You have the same question.
Thanks for coming to help.
I have the same question, and I...
You're about my bag, man.
You get all that thing, girl.
I suggest you get out of my way.
No.
Walk around.
I wasn't in your way.
Off standard, give me some way.
I wasn't in your way, I'm in right here.
You guys ought to be real proud, I'll tell you, real proud.
There are some things that I heard about buildings.
Dan, why didn't you sign my check?
I'm gonna check in if the building's correct, guys.
Give me my copy of the thing, it'd be fine.
Dan, why didn't you sign my check again? Under a highly advised code, elected officials are paid a certain way. You're paid every month, why am I not signing on the check?
Just go somewhere else and talk.